Seventeen at six p.m. is now called for order. Uh, welcome everybody. Glad to see we've got a lot of folks here tonight. Uh, our work session items, uh, here's the one item and edit the public, uh, discussion on the third coast development. We're going to start with public comment.
Work session related items?
There you go. Uh, if, if you would please, um, you can come forward in an orderly fashion, state your name and your address, and I will give you five minutes to make comment. If anyone wishes to make public comment on the items.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tyler Luffin, the DDA Executive and Economic Development Director. I just thought I'd reiterate the DDA Board's position that I stated at the last meeting, and that's that the DDA Board does not, or the DDA supports the senior center moving to the Olsons property with the grocery tenant. However, they do not support the low-income housing component of the project, and would recommend that the council does not approve any financial assistance in the form of tax abatements or payment in lieu of taxes. Thank you.
Good evening. Glenn Zerring. I live at three twenty-one Fifth Street here in Manistee. I'd like to address the proposed Third Coast construction project there at the Olson Center. When it was first proposed, I know I was one of the people who said, "This looks really nice." But details started changing as we progressed through this whole consideration process. And the details changed the entire aspect into something which quite frankly, I think is undesirable for our community and for the future of Manistee. As picture of this project continued to develop, a number of merchants, taxpayers, and citizens voiced their concerns. That concern manifested itself into a petition. And so petition was reads, "Petition to the Manistee City Council. We, the undersigned citizens, taxpayers, merchants, and commercial property owners, demand that the Manistee City Council and its management cease and refrain from current development tactics and adhere to the government's protocols already in place controlling infill, construction within the historic district, and the adjacent C-three commercial district. And in so doing, use the findings generated by the Housing Authority, the Historic District Commission, Downtown Development Authority, and the Planning Commission to evaluate and score proposed development projects for need and appropriateness in a transparent and consistent manner. To adhere to the Secretary of Interior Preservation Guidelines derived from the National Park Service. To assure all zoning, infrastructure, environmental impact, and public safety concerns are addressed and quantified. To protect the city and DDA tax base, and prevent unfair burden on current taxpayers. And further, assure full public participation as required by state and federal funding entities and the local redevelopment-ready community program." As I present these signed petitions to you, please be aware that the future of generations of Manistee residents is hanging in the balance. Residents who will have to live with the results and will have to pay for it. Please do not allow projects like this to develop outside of our established system and outside of our true vision. If I may present these petitions.
Dennis Truhorst, sixty-three Clay Street. I'm asking that councilperson Beaton recuse herself on all deliberations regarding the redevelopment at the Olson site for obvious financial conflict in interest.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ebling. I live at four two nine Second Street. And I've been thinking about this lately, and at first I thought it was a really good idea. And I do think it's a really good idea for the senior center and for the grocery store. But thanks to Dennis's letter to the editor, I got to thinking, this is maybe some of our last prime property. And what we want on the prime property is people that can afford to buy prime property, and so that they will be paying the taxes and coming down shopping and going to the grocery stores. Now, I had some labors the other day tell me, well, I had it all wrong, and that there were too many things that I didn't know, so I shouldn't say anything. So they told me that retired teachers were the ones that all this was for, and that, um, I got to thinking, a retired teacher, if they're married, they certainly have an income of more than twenty thousand a year. So I wasn't quite sure what to think about that. So, um, the only thing I think is that we need to be careful about using our prime property and think about some of the other cities, harbor cities that are doing really well, and have they put this kind of property on their riverfront? Thank you.
Do we have any additional speakers?
I'm Jim Matthews, I own property at three thirty-four, three forty, three thirty-six and three thirty-eight River Street. And I've been following this quite, quite thoroughly. And what I've seen is lots of jigration, lots of, lots of questionable tactic to try to make this thing, to make this, this entire project, just make it go through. Um, and the last one has been this, just challenging the pilot. Um, in my opinion, this pilot, this doesn't even deserve a pilot, simply because it's, pilot is for properties and entities that, that don't have another, another way to be taxed. Real estate has a way to be taxed, it's called real estate tax. And it, and, and if they're going to put property there, they should pay the real estate tax, not, not, not mobile the city who is, is struggling right now. I've, I've been looking at the budgets, the city budget, not, not, not intently, but close enough to realize that when I looked at the, and I don't know which draft it is, because I know it's been being revised, but, but one revision I looked at a couple of weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago, I saw the fire truck in there. Yeah, we need a new fire truck. The one we have is twenty years old. So I looked at the capital improvement plan, and I see that's been kicked down, down the, down the road for five years before it was planned to be addressed. So we're just going to keep our fire truck, you know, keep it in the house, hope it doesn't get used too much, because we can't afford to buy a new one. But yet, we can afford to have a developer come in here and not pay their fair share of revenues in the city to take, once again, one of the most, most attractive vacant properties left in the area and put something on it that won't generate revenue. It'll just, it'll, it'll just exist and suck up resources. And I'm a senior, so I understand senior housing. And I also understand that as a senior, I have an obligation to my kids and my grandkids not to make this debt that this country is suffering any bigger. And, and the, the federal government and the state governments have ruined city after city in this country, Chicago, St. Louis, Detroit, Flint, with all their programs, all their, all their, you know, they got all the seed money, the start culture programs that really don't make any sense, but people can make money off it. Our friends at AES, that's all they do, is make money on processing loans for this kind of stuff, governments and industry. And, you know, they need to go move that industry somewhere where it can be afforded, but Manistee's not that community. And, and, you know, I can look at the, I can look at the salaries here, I can look at the infrastructure here, it's a great place, people work hard, but this, this kind of development doesn't really have a place here. You do not have the, the, the depth of support that you would need to siphon off the resources to afford to put something like this in place. And even in cities that did have it, like Chicago, they ruined the entire south side of Chicago with public housing. They just ruined it. Now they, now they can redevelop it, developers can make redevelopment. I lived in St. Louis for ten years. Same thing happened there. They, they wiped out the whole south side of the, of the city of St. Louis. And then, you know, government came in with some cheese to put the water department, fix the water department in Flint. Well, they fixed that as well, didn't they? So keep that in mind when the government is dangling money in front of you, free money. It's not free money. Government creates nothing. Government only redistributes. And keep that in mind when these decisions are made, and make them with, with respect for future generations and respect for common sense. Thank you very much.
Any others that wish to make public comment?
Alice Clark, three oh nine Fifth Avenue. I'm one of those seniors, and if a senior tries to get housing in this town they can afford, there's not much choice. In fact, the housing news they have on Sixth Avenue, no way would a senior want to live at Century Terrace. I don't care if they are going to get better or not, you wouldn't want to live there. Harborview, they have their rules too strict, and they aren't even that good anymore. We need these housing, and I can tell you that we have a waiting list of several people wanting these apartments. Now you say they're not feasible, taxable, whatever. You've got to think of your seniors, because we're the ones that have lived here a long time. You get that housing there, there will be, we're a place where seniors can walk downtown and do their shopping and walk back. As far as prime property, what are you going to put there? We don't have that kind of people coming in here. I don't care what you say, we don't. This, to me, is well-deserved, and the seniors need it, and we need it all.
Any additional public comments?
Good evening. Mick Schumaski, three three two Fifth Street. And I've, I've kind of made some of these points before, but fairly new, I came back to the area after I retired working for the Department of Defense for thirty-three years, taking care of the troops. And taking care of the troops and taking care of our seniors isn't that far of a stretch. And what I see by this project is a great opportunity. You have a, a property in a very good location, and you have what I would consider to be a developer who is looking at creating a win-win situation for themselves as well as for the community of Manistee. And again, projects like this, there has to be a win on both sides. And, and the housing side of this is the developers' win. Talking about saying it's okay to have the, the senior center without the other aspects of this project, you're basically killing the, the opportunity for the senior center to be developed. Now, again, to just briefly about the, the housing. I think there's a misnomer when people are talking about senior housing and low income. Low income is, is a difficult thing to articulate, because I can have a couple million dollars in the bank that I can draw from, that is not income. Your income would be, for example, your social security. Maximum social security is about thirty thousand dollars a year, right? And it takes, you know, a, a six-figure salary for a number of years in order to obtain that. Most of, I believe, our citizens' income from social security falls within the guidelines of low income. But that does not mean that these are people that aren't going to be able to afford to shop. In fact, in many situations, their, their income and their resources probably make them more of an opportunity to shop, because they don't have the other expenses. The other thing is when we're talking about housing for seniors, it's not just the availability of housing, it's the accessibility. And what makes this project so wonderful for our community is the fact that you are going to have housing and a senior center co-located. What a wonderful idea.
Bob Daniels, fifty-nine Smith Street, Manistee. As I'm sure you're all well aware, I have been deeply involved in this for over a year now. I still absolutely one hundred fifty million percent support it. I believe in it. I poured my heart, blood, and soul into this. But it, it just amazes me when I hear people say things like, "Oh, we really support the senior center and the grocery store, but we don't want the housing, because that's going to mess with the taxes." Olsons has never indicated any interest whatsoever in splitting the property. They want to be rid of the whole thing. The developer is willing to take on the whole thing. I don't believe in Olsons is that anybody else expressed interest in the property. So that means that if the senior center ends up somehow, if the developer pulls out because you reject the pilot, and somehow we can come up with financing, we will then buy the whole thing, and you will continue to get your two hundred dollars a year taxes on the parking lot, and the senior center will be there forever. So I don't think you're going to buy too many fire trucks at two hundred bucks a year, which is what you're going to get in the parking lot. Don't forget the Council on Aging is a five oh one C-three. You're not getting anything from any of the property that we own. You're going to get taxes from the grocery store piece of it. So keep that in mind as you're looking at this.
Are there any additional public comments?
Okay, councilmember Beaton, um, for, for the benefit of, of all, this is a, a work session. Sometimes in a work session, when we're working on a budget, we will take, we look for a consensus to, to move forward. But that always move forward to a formal council session for an official vote is taken. There will be no vote taken tonight. And I would think for the sake of, of public discussion, we would include all of our council members in that discussion tonight, but I will certainly, based on a comment, get an opinion from the city attorney, who's not present tonight, to make sure that there is not a, a conflict of interest. But Linda, if you'd like to make a comment for that?
Well, I was rather surprised by his comment. I have not participated in either the sale of the senior center on River Street. I don't represent a buyer for it. I'm not really sure where my conflict of interest lies by that accusation.
And with that, Mr. Taylor?
First of all, I'd like to just address a couple of inaccuracies in the petition that was submitted to council. If you look at the first paragraph, about halfway down, it cites governance, governance protocols already in place controlling the infill construction within the historic district and the adjacent C-three commercial district. First of all, it's not within the historic district, so those standards don't apply. I just wanted to point that out. And going through, uh, down into this paragraph, it also has a reference to the Historic District Commission, and again, because it's not the Historic District, the Historic District Commission has no say in the matter. And then finally, it references to the Planning Commission, that they've already received their approval from the Planning Commission, so actually the findings were generated already by the Planning Commission. On the second bullet point, where they say adherence to the Secretary of Interior Preservation Guidelines derived from the National Park Service, again, that's only for something within the historic district, and that building is not in the historic district. The next, um, bullet point, assure all zoning, infrastructure, environmental impact, and safe, public safety concerns are addressed and quantified, that was done as part of the land use approval through the Planning Commission, so those steps were taken. And, um, the last bullet point is that assure full public participation as required by state and federal funding entities and the local redevelopment-ready community. There was a public hearing, it was held by the Planning Commission on March second, and it has required under the Planning Enabling Act for zoning approval. So I just wanted to point out those inaccuracies within the petition, so it's on the record and we know. You called it.
Yeah?
I'll ask a question. If Mr. Daniels or maybe Third Coast can help me with this. I wonder, I attended three meetings, and all three meetings, we talked about the senior center and the senior center only, and there was a, an overwhelming amount of support for the senior center. And then somehow the apartments or the, the building complex or the, got involved with this. What happened? What, I miss in the middle area. Why, why all of a sudden are the apartments involved in this? Mr. Taylor, maybe you can help me. What?
That became part of the, part of the development, development concept.
Well, why did it? What, what, what transpired that made that happen?
I'm not certain of the, of the thought process. That would be between the developer and the Council on Aging, as to why that became part of the project. It was not, it was not requested by the city, so it would be pure speculation on my part as to why that aspect was added.
I guess the reason I'm asked in question is pure speculation on my part and a lot of other people. You hear different opinions of, of how that happened to get to, or how that reached that point, that now if one doesn't go, the other doesn't go. I'm just trying to get that all clear in my head.
Maybe Mr. Daniels can enlighten us.
I will try anyway. Mr. Mayor Prokem, the concept has been evolving from day one. It was, what could we do? I mean, I called Olsons the day they put the announcement in the paper that they were closing the store to see if there was any interest. Olsons then reached out to AES. We began working with AES. AES contracted, contacted the developer, brought them in. We sat down in a number of meetings, began to figure out what we could do, what we could afford. The Council on Aging is far from a wealthy organization and has, basically lives one hundred percent on our millage. We had to find a way that we could then actually buy the property. Olsons was not interested in splitting it. They wanted to sell the entire property as one piece, which includes the two stores that are there, the two remote stores, the, the discount store, and the dollar store, the parking lots, and one house around behind Olsons on Taylor Street. All of that's part of this package. It's two point some odd acres. So that's when the grocery store piece came in. We began to work through the grocery stores to what they could do. The developer was then looking at, well, they need to have some reason to be in this, because they don't have any, any profit coming from pulling off the, the senior center. The senior center is integral to their apartments being successful. They started looking into the MISHDA programs, and it evolved from there. The senior village concept was really my idea from the very beginning, was that we put everything into one place, where we have housing, we have a grocery store. Again, we have the very great potential of having a small pharmacy in there. We have had interest from other, um, small businesses that would be on the first floor of the apartment buildings. So the whole point was, within a walking area, we would have it all right there. In addition, it's a two-block walk to downtown and everything that's downtown. So the housing just evolved as a natural piece. Now, i- if Olsons isn't interested in splitting it, that means that then we're going to have to either own all the parking lots or the grocery store. Well, the grocery store's not going to own anything, they're just going to rent from us. So there's going to be the bigger parking lots out there, and housing was a natural fit for that. We know that there's a demand for housing in Manistee, that lots of seniors would like to get out of their houses and get into apartments like this where they don't have to worry about maintenance, and just pick up the phone and say, "Hey, my faucet's dripping," or whatever, and have it all taken care of. There was a study just released a couple of days ago that showed the median income for senior citizens in Manistee County is twenty thousand dollars a year, give or take. I forget the exact number. That was a nineteen fourteen, uh, nineteen, a two thousand fourteen figure, so it's a couple of years out of date, but it is the most recent number available. That number's still over two thousand dollars below the upper limit on the, the income level for this, for these apartments. So it, it's just morphed into it. Now, when I first came to the city council, I believe it was back in December, maybe, or early January, and talked about this, I stated that the apartments and the senior center were separate pieces of it. And that, that is correct, because the developer is developing the apartments. The Council on Aging will have no involvement in the operation of rental of, anything of the apartments. We will own the current Olsons building and rent the south, or the east half of it off to the grocery store. We will own the majority of the parking lot space. The developer will own where the two buildings will eventually go, which includes the area where the dollar store and the resale store are now, and they'll own the house behind it on Taylor Street. They're going to buy the whole thing from Olsons, all the property. This is the way they can use the property and make some money on the deals by putting the apartments on it. They didn't know exactly what MISHDA was going to require for this particular project until they got into it. And it just morphed. Things change as they do in this world over the past few months. Now, their application went in, and David could explain more about that, as it was due the first of April, and it's in and being processed for the, the MISHDA financing piece of it. So that's the best explanation I can give you.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? I got questions on page one of, of the developer assistance application. We've got a number of rent restricted units, forty-two, market rate units, zero. You get to barrier-free units, and that block is blank. I believe in a recent presentation we had here that we were talking about senior and disabled housing, and, and yet this is indicating no checkmark for persons with disabilities. Are we strictly talking about senior housing, or what exactly are we talking about here?
Excuse me, my name is Jacob Moore. I'm with PK Housing. We're partners with Third Coast on this development. As part of our application of MISHDA, where you're required to set aside ten percent of the units, is ADA accessible, fully barrier-free. They'll have all the turning radiuses and whatnot. So ten percent, in, in this case, since we have forty-two apartments, we have to round up, so that's five. And then in addition to that, one hundred percent of the units will be visible, which means that a handicapped person will be able to access any unit in the building without any special help. They'll be able to visit all of those units and be able to go in and out of them, and then, as I said, five of them will be fully barrier-free. So, uh, under eight, under the Americans for Disabilities Act, we're not allowed to discriminate against any person that has a disability, required to accommodate those folks as best we can.
I have a question. There was a public session already.
Oh, all right.
Can we get back to the finance part of this item, where we're talking about pilot? I, you know, I see, uh, low-income tax credits projected at seven million, six hundred thousand But I go back and I look at some of the verbiage that we have in here, we talk about requesting a two percent pilot on an eight-point-six-million-dollar project. And then worksheet on the very next page indicates it's got a two-million-dollar market value. The assessor, when I asked questions several months ago about, you know, what would be an appropriate guesstimate of, of taxes on a property, came up with a value of about two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars a year in property taxes. And I believe that based on, on what's considered to be an eight, at, at the time, eight-point-two million-dollar project. How do we go from eight-point-six million dollars to two million dollars of market value?
So, so how that typically works is, the, the reason is, if, if we were building a, a market-rate apartment complex, it would cost us about the eight million dollars to build it, and hopefully the value would be around eight million dollars after it's completed, because you're able to charge whatever rents the market is able to bear. In this case, because all, one hundred percent of the units are rent restricted, meaning that we can only charge between about three hundred and six hundred and fifty dollars a month, that means that our cash flow is, is very restricted, and so the value of the property is significantly lower than what it would be on our market rates narrow. So yes, we're, we're building a very expensive property, and the value is significantly lower if you were to just look at the, the cash flow that, that we're earning off of that. And that's, that's one of the reasons why we have to get tax credits, that subsidizes the building cost. Because when, at the end of the day, when we're done, we'll have a mortgage of about seven hundred thousand dollars on an eight-million-dollar property. So if, if, and, and the reason for that is because we have those restricted rents. If we had fully market-rate rents, we could charge higher than that and have a, a more more sizable mortgage. more sizable mortgage. But the tax credit subsidizes the cost of the development so that we're left with a lower mortgage that those smaller rents can, can serve us.
I mean, you're going to, you're going to build a housing complex upon this property and two existing buildings that are leased are going to remain. Are you including those in, in, in your pilot or are those going to pay taxes based on the value of those buildings ongoing?
I'm not really involved with, with the other phase of development, but I know that the numbers that, as far as I know, the numbers we've shared with you are only for the senior housing piece, the 42 unit apartments.
Right. The pilot request is purely for what is now a parking lot and it's the housing in that area of the parking lot.
In its entirety? Just the housing unit?
Just the housing units in that section of the parking lot, yeah. So the, so the, the existing building, the, the dollar, family, or the dollar, family dollar and the redeemed furniture will continue to pay their fully allocated index taxes. The current, the current Olson's building, which is, it's going to have the senior center in it as well as the, the grocery store. It's anticipated that the grocery store will pay their full market rate taxes. The senior center, of course, being a 501(c)(3) and a unit of government will, will be exempted. That's not part of our request. So what we're really asking for is that the current parking lot area, which of the total tax bill generates a, I don't even remember the number now at this point, but, but a, but a pretty small number, like a thousand dollars a year in tax. We're asking for that to have the payment lieu of taxes applied to it and the municipal services agreement, which actually you've already passed that. What we're asking for now is that it be revised. But, so, so that's purely just on that piece of property, which today is parking spaces.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
The, the apartment building will also have retail space in it and that, any retail space is not covered by the pilot, so they would, there'd be a separate ad valorem tax bill for.
You know, it's interesting. We hear, we hear all these people talking, I've got 60 people on a waiting list. I've got 70 people on a waiting list. And, and then I see all, all this vacancy being charged against the expenses in this. One commercial space in the building and, and then there's an annual expense for vacancy. I mean, it's either occupied or it's not occupied. What's, what's going on with these numbers?
That's a, that's a, that's a fairly simple situation. When you underwrite a project, or, or any of you bankers, when, when you underwrite a project, the bankers will require a vacancy and credit loss number to be in the numbers. So they'll look at that and say, you know, for three months, every 10 years, that space may be vacant, so you have to charge that off. Now, when we actually pay the taxes based off the pilot, it's based off of the actual shelter rents, so the vacancy doesn't matter. But, but we're working off of average vacancy and credit loss numbers.
Well, when, when you add those two vacancy rates together and you look at the, the statement that says, you know what, we're going to lose $22,000 a year if we don't get this pilot. You know, a big chunk of that gets, gets made up through that vacancy rate. So I mean, there's a lot of write offs that you're showing as expenses on your worksheet here and you're showing, you know, we're going to, we're going to lose money on this and I'm, I'm curious about it. The last two pilot, and, and the city of Manistee were done with minimum values in excess of $20,000 and, and one with a municipal service agreement on top of that. We, we had kind of a floor level of, of the amount of payment that we wanted in lieu of taxes. This one's 45 years, so everybody sitting here is probably going to, you're going to be either very aged on, on one end or, or long gone, but you know, we're, we're going to be impacting people well into the future with this decision. And I know we're in the budget process and, and our finance officers brought up the issues that, you know, we can't do matching grant things and stuff with the capital improvement program because the city council spent or obligated the capital improvement fund, you know, in the past and we're limited for funds. And, and we're also very strapped for tax growth. A budget clearly states that. You know, the forecast for growth in revenue from, from property tax is, is not something that looks very positive. We're looking that we may have to curb some of the services that we offer that people think a, a great deal about. So you, when, when I look at all these numbers and stuff, of course, I'm going to ask some questions. And we represent the people that, that have elected us, you know, the citizens here in, in the city of Manistee. They, my taxes went up this year and you make a comment here, you know, this is going to be good for the community because all of the properties surrounding this development are going to be worth more because of this development and those people are going to pay higher tax bills because you built a nice facility adjacent to them. And, you know, I'm not sure that the adjacent taxpayers are going to be happy, that they're going to pay more taxes when, when you're getting a substantial concession in taxes for an extended period of time. You know, I'm, you know, I'm just bringing up the opposite end of things and I, and I understand the perspectives that Third Coast has too. You know, a weed infested parking lot's not going to bring any tax revenue in and if we don't build it, you wouldn't get anything anyhow. You know, I, I understand that logic also, but I'm also operating from, from perspective from some of the things that some of the people have been speaking to me about. We approved a 10%, 35 year and that allowed you to apply. When are we going to find out whether or not you were successful for your application?
First round, or thi- this round, I think the information gets released July 1st.
July?
And, you know, assuming that everything else is lined up, if we don't get, if we don't get awarded credits this round, we would plan on, we, we have two other options. One is to go back in in October and the other is to switch the program that we're using. And, and we're, both of those are on the table. I mean, we're, we're very committed to doing the project.
Then I might ask the question, since we've already given you what you need to apply for the program to begin with, why is it prudent for us to renegotiate that to a very low level at this point in time when we don't even know what you're going to get until July?
Well, as I pointed out in the, in the last meetings, the pilot application, that the, the commitment that we've made to the, to the state is that we would maintain affordability on these for a minimum of 45 years. So when I was in here and asked for, for the pilot before, the 10% 35 year, I attempted to be pretty direct about the fact that we would be in a really difficult spot if we were forced to pay fully indexed ad valorem taxes for 10 years, which would be a couple, you know, whatever that difference is that you've calculated for a 10-year period. And because of that, because the, it would, it would essentially put us in a spot where we would be running, you know, impossibly negative cash flows, we would be facing some type of a, you know, fiscal crisis on the property. It wouldn't make sense for us to move forward. That, that, that time period, that 10 years of full taxes on one side, if you, if you look back at the numbers, we're, we're collecting like $250,000 in rent and if you fully index those taxes, as you've noted, Mr. Mayor, that's almost the total tax bill. So we would either be, we'd be stuck with a situation where we'd have to go back to MISHDA and break our promise and break the promises that we're making here, which we don't want to do, or ask you to say, as long as you, kind of make a deal. As long as you guys are willing to hold the, the rates on those units and make, keep them affordable, we'll keep the taxes affordable for you as well. So, so that's really why we need the, to, to change from 35 to 45 years. And I, I feel like I was pretty direct about that in the past, but if I wasn't, I apologize. But, but I, but I feel like we've made that point that we have to know that now because once we are awarded the credits, we're, we're pot committed. So we, we need to make a decision as to whether or not the city supports this and either pull the application and be done or leave the application in. Once they grant the credits, it's, there's some, you know, some back and forth activity that goes on once the credits are granted, but, but we're, we're, we're basically committed once they say you've, you've been awarded the credits. We don't want to be taking credits from MISHDA and then not being able to perform. That's a, that's a detrimental process for our company that we can't really afford to do.
On your application, did you put the 10% pilot or was it, um, did you state that it was going to be at the 2%?
No, we had it modeled, you can answer that better. On the, the application that went to MISHDA, we had it modeled as approved, right? 10, yeah. Because the, the application doesn't go out to 35 years. They, they, they didn't look.
So you had it approved at 45 years or how did?
No, no, no. The, the, when you, when you present the financial model, it's only like 10 years that they ask for. So we weren't really concerning ourselves with that in, as part of the application. We, we put the application in with what we had, which was 10% 35 years, but, but the economics don't work for us in that timeframe. So we knew that we were going to have to change it. We, we had stated that when we were here, that, you know, we're approving 10, 35, but we really need something lower. And then we worked back and forth with this notion of a municipal services agreement and, which does set a floor. And so even if we get zero rent, which won't happen, but even if we were to get zero rent, there is a floor. And so we, we did kind of take the advice and, and input back and, and rework our requests that you have in front of you.
The initial discussion was, was instead of 10%, 4%. And I know there was the, the other discussion about the Grand Rapids project, 2%, the Lexington project, 2%. Now all of a sudden, we're down to 2%. We're half of, of, of what was addressed in, in previous sessions, which is a lot less than 10%. We're going to build the biggest project that's ever been built in the city of Manistee for about one-third the tax revenue or, or tax value through the pilot program that we've received in the past. And it's strictly, and it, and you know, and I know people bristle over, over the designation, but this, the 60% adjusted median income is, is defined by the government and by the state as low income. 40% adjusted median income and 30% adjusted median income. 30% below the federal poverty level. Nine units below the poverty level. And I know people can talk to assets and, and everything else and it doesn't reflect the true value of, of the, of the people. But if I had $2 million in the bank, I guarantee I'd be drawing enough interest. I wouldn't, I wouldn't qualify to live in, in, in this housing project. My social security wouldn't allow me to live in this housing project and, and I, I think, you know, a lot of the people that, that I'm familiar with that initially thought it was going to be a market rate unit and gee, I, I can, I can sell my house and move into this and not have to mow the grass and not have to shovel snow, have, have some cover parking to put my vehicle and, and walk to most things. And now a lot of those people aren't going to be part of the plan because they make too much money. And, and in my opinion, that was really the kind of housing that we needed as opposed to, we've got 167 units of Century Terrace and Harborview. We've got other non-senior low income housing. We, we have a, a unit just in Foller Township that's got 49 units of senior housing. 39 of those units are, are market controlled units. So there's over 200 of those units and, and I understand there's not a whole lot of choice and, and with our own housing commission, there was a failure to maintain the status of senior and disabled in there that has been rectified and movement is, is being made at this time to make sure that we don't have general population low income, that it is restricted to senior and, and disabled, but it's 167 units in, in the city right now.
Restricted to zero to 30. So, so if you make between 30 and 60, you can't, or 31 and 60, you can't live in those.
They're 50%, the housing commission.
They're 50? Okay. So if you make more than that, you can't live in those.
That's right. And you're at 60, so you're, you're just, just marginally above them.
I think, and I may be wrong, but I think when the housing commission was here though, didn't they say that they are, that they are at zero, that they're restricting themselves to zero to 30 then?
But the housing commission also has to take someone that has zero income.
Right, right. And that's not ours. Ours, if you, really if you think about the housing in terms of what you're offering people, the, the stuff for the housing commission typically is zero to 30. We're taking the next slice of 30 to 60 and then actually statewide, there's a crisis of how do the people from 60 to 90, where do they go? But that's not really for tonight's discussion. And then the market rate takes care of itself. So it, it's, it's, it creates a bit of a, of a misperception if we're conflating this and the, the housing commission product because it's a completely different product. It's completely different populations.
And our rent is not subsidized.
Our rent is not subsidized.
Are you going to have some of the same population? The 30% and 40% are definitely the same population as the housing commission.
But in, in, in all cases though, in, in our, with our development, unless the person has a Section 8 voucher, they have to pay rent. So they're, under the, under the housing commission properties, the person just pays between zero, pays 30% of their income and the federal government covers the rest of their rent. We, we do not receive any rental subsidy unless the person comes to us with a Section 8 voucher and that voucher can be used at any number of different apartments, so they would just choose to live at our apartment. So that draws the distinction between somebody needs to be paying at least, you know, our minimum rent is around $300 for a 30% unit. So there's a difference between that and somebody that is paying zero rent and having their, their, the federal government subsidizing their entire rent.
I mean, I think, I think it's important to note that the demand for this housing is there. You know, as people have pointed out about average incomes and all this kind of other information, forget all that for a minute. MISHDA requires a market study. We paid for and received a market study that went in with our MISHDA application that clearly stated that the demand for this housing is there. So, so your own constituents are out there wanting to move into this with all of these restrictions on it. So I, you know, obviously my opinion on that is that it's, it's, it's needed and, and we're here to help try to fill that gap.
Does that study distinguish between city and county residents?
The study is based off of, actually they, they work off of the address that, that we're moving to.
So every, every address then would be in the city is what you're saying?
No, 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 no. They, what they say is within a range and Jacob can explain that more, but what they, what they work off of is based off of that address, who are the likely people to move in there from wherever the, the, the range is. It's probably the whole county.
Can I, can I just make one comment? Just going back to some of your comments about the vacancies and the expenses, I did just want to say, you know, we, we understand, you know, your objective that, that the city doesn't want to give us any more tax rate than we, than we absolutely need. And I just want to express that, you know, when, when we're doing these deals, you have to prove, not, not just to us making a financial decision, but we have to prove to MISHDA, we have to prove to our tax rated investor and we have to prove to a bank that's going to loan us a, a construction loan to build this property, that the expenses that we're going to have, that, that we can live within those. Now, obviously, and, and as part of that, MISHDA requires us to use certain assumptions when we're underwriting these deals. They say you need to assume that you're going to have an 8% vacancy rate. That's just what it, unless you can prove to them why it should be lower, that's what you have to use. And, you know, we as a management company, we, we certainly hope to beat that and, and we would like to beat that, but, you know, this is a rural market. It's not, you know, we think that the market is definitely there, but it doesn't fill up as fast as when we're opening a property in Grand Rapids or Lansing or something like that where you have thousands of, of folks ready to move in. We think that this is going to be very successful, but because it, it is in a rural market, you have to discount, you know, you have to make certain assumptions about vacancy and about your expenses. And, and we all expect to beat that, but if we don't, you know, we have to show that we have enough cushion to be able to cover it if we have a bad year. I mean, I'm sure when you're doing your budgeting, you go and look at, you know, your, your tax revenues that you're bringing in and you discount it a little bit because you might not collect from everybody or somebody will have to be on a payment plan. You know, we have to do the same thing. We have to assume, you know, almost not a worst case scenario, but we have to be conservative or else, you know, a bank is not going to give us a loan to build this project and the tax rate investor is not going to give us, they're not going to buy those tax credits because they don't trust us, they wouldn't trust us to build that if we were too optimistic. So I, I just want to say that the numbers are all very driven by the fact that they need to be underwritten by financial institutions, by the state, and, and they, they are very stringent in what they require us to assume when we're filling out these projections because it's a projection. I mean, we don't know exactly what's going to happen. You know, we have past experience and we, you know, are, are very good at what we do, but, you know, no, nobody knows exactly what's going to happen. And so you have to, you know, assume a conservative scenario in order to get financed and get your, get your project closed.
At the end of the year, is that a, is private audit done on all those figures to determine what?
We're, yeah, we're required to have.
Independent?
Yep. We're required to have a third party CPA firm do our audit and tax returns and those are.
And that's where the bottom line figures come from and after that audit.
Okay.
I guess I have another question while you're standing up there. I've, I've, as I'm sitting home, uh, reading this all over and trying to decide after attending a lot of meetings, and all the players that are involved in this, how many, how many players are committed, actually committed, other than an option to this project? Has, for example, the Council on Aging, have they paid their twenty-five thousand dollars? Has Third Coast Development bought the property? It seems like we're, we're, to me, we're being a little bit premature in deciding a pilot on something that really hasn't been bought yet, or, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe it has been bought.
Nope.
All I hear is bits and pieces of what's going on. I don't know the.
But yeah, so, so, uh, the way that this process works is that, um, we, uh, are in contract to purchase the property. We have not closed the contract. We have a lease from the grocery store. We have not signed the lease. We have, uh, an, an agreement with, uh, the Council on Aging, but we're still working through the details of, of the agreement with Council on Aging. Part of that is that everything becomes a contingency. And so the way that these projects work one hundred percent of the time is when we first signed up to buy the building, we began spending money and taking risk. But we didn't own it, and we still don't own it. We own it technically by contract, so we can go to MISTA and say we have control of the property. Uh, that's why I'm standing here and the Olson family members are not. But, but we don't, excuse me. We're not in a position to close right now until these issues are worked out.
So could we, I'm sorry.
Good.
So could, everybody else is on a contingency basis, or maybe if everything works out, maybe we should do a pilot based on that same thing?
Well, you are.
Pilot is.
You are. If we don't build the building, there's no pilot. If we don't build a low-income housing tax credit-approved building from MISTA, you're not, you're not giving us a tax break on that property, no matter what we put there. We're making a very specific, thank you, Chip. We're making a very specific request for a very specific building. If we do anything else, you know, it's kind of like, it's like deal or no deal. If we do anything else, you guys can throw your hands up and say, no deal. It's, it's not even, it's not even a question, it's just the fact. If we don't build, excuse me, one second.
Sure.
If we don't build that building with those credits, then that property stays exactly taxed as it is. So it is, we're actually asking you, it's a really good point, we're actually asking you for what amounts to be a contingent agreement, contingent upon us doing the things we say we're going to do. If we fail, you're clear.
Just to let you know, the Council on Aging Board is having a special meeting Friday morning at ten AM to vote on the, the purchase agreement.
Is that going to be an open meeting?
It will start open, and then we'll go into a closed session to discuss and then vote.
Where, where are we at with the capital fundraising?
We met with a, um, an individual from North Sky Development, I believe the name is, that connected with Rotary Charities in Traverse City. We've had three meetings with her now, they're very productive. We agreed to a contract with them today to lead the development effort for us. We have a, a complex campaign that's going to be kicking off within the next, I would say roughly a month. We are still pulling together all the pieces on it. We believe, um, we know what we're going to try and raise and what a realistic opportunity is, but we're still doing more digging and looking into it. But, um, that will be focused on everything we can do to reduce the amount that we have to borrow from the Department of Agriculture, or to enhance the building, or to enhance our services in the building. And exactly how will depend upon what the people want to donate, and frankly, how many commas are in their donation, so.
Is that, is that figure open? I mean, you, how much do you figure you're going to need to raise?
Yes. I'm sorry?
How much do you, can you tell us how much your goal is, or what you plan to?
Right now, we're anticipating a million dollars.
Okay.
And, um, I, I should tell you that we have received notification from the Department of Agriculture that our loan request has been approved, uh, for the, for the project. However, there are contingencies there. A, the Department of Agriculture needs either a long-term continuing resolution or a budget, and then the local office needs the release of funds from Washington to the Michigan office to make that happen. But as a project, it has been approved to happen, and, um, it's just a matter now of getting the funds released to get here to do it, so.
Which, as you asked before about the list of, that was another of our contingencies that we just were notified about two hours ago, right?
Yeah, yeah, just this, this afternoon.
That contingency is now, there, there are contingencies within the approval, but the approval was a contingency in itself. And so we all expect at some point that there will in fact be a budget, hopefully.
Yeah. Or a continuing resolution or something.
So, so this process just keeps closing in and tightening in around, um, you know, the, the dates that we can actually, you know, begin.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, it just seemed like it just, everything was just out there, and I'm trying to put it all together in my head, what, what is real and what is just hanging out there waiting the option to exercise that option.
The, the timing of the process is pretty, is pretty straightforward. As things move together, though, um, our expectation is, um, that the Council on Aging will have their work taken care of in about thirty days, and will immediately close on the property and begin, uh, the construction, demising of the property for the retail tenant, as well as the COA, and doing their construction. Our goal, uh, we've pushed out a, a couple of months, but our goal is to have the Council on Aging in by early fall.
Maybe Bob, where are, I'm sorry if I call you, Bob.
No, that's, of course.
I'm trying to figure out the, the rental. And again, my mind does crazy things sometimes, and I'm thinking about the, the rental part, the, um, the grocery store part. Is that about eight thousand dollars? Is that about what you get out of that rent?
Um, it's, it's a little less than that, maybe sixty-five, sixty-eight hundred, something like that. Uh, we, we have an agreed amount for the first ten years, and that, that amount is locked in to the lease for that, that period. And I'm just trying to do the math in my head, but I'm terrible at math.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven fifty a month.
Okay, so, and then they have to pay a prorated maintenance fee on top of that?
That's correct. They will pay all of their own utilities, all of their own taxes, and then they will pay, um, maintenance on the building. And, and, for instance, if an air conditioner breaks down, one of the HVAC units breaks down, but doesn't need to be replaced, they will repair it. If a window breaks, they will replace it. If a light bulb goes out, they will replace it. The Council on Aging will own the general property, and they will pay a prorated share towards the maintenance of the parking lots, the grass cutting, the sign, the lighting of the parking lots, all of that.
Which also the, the grocery store pays their share of that.
Since the Council on Aging owns the building, will they not also pay the property tax on the commercial portion?
I think.
Building owner typically does that as opposed to a tenant.
It would probably flow as a pass-through. That's, that's really, uh, I, I'd have to go back through the lease, but I'm pretty sure that the Council on Aging will collect that money every month, and, and they will pay that portion every year. Yeah.
Sort of an escrow.
Yeah.
We have no idea what that amount might be at this point.
The taxes?
Yeah.
No.
We're, my, just my back of the envelope estimate is, um, about twenty-three thousand dollars a year.
Just from the grocery store?
Yeah. And it's just a, that's a, that's a Dave calculation that.
Yeah, I understand.
Bob, I, I never even shared it with Bob.
I, I'm not even, I'm not holding it to, but I'm just trying to get an idea, trying to understand the process and.
And the only reason I got that is I tried to do some calculation based on the current taxes and the square footages and whatnot, so that I could give some number to the grocer, so he could begin budgeting what he was expecting his costs.
Now, was part of this also going to be, um, the drugstore? Was that also going to be in the senior center? Was that going to be in the other?
No. We, we've, we've had very preliminary discussions. I, I'm not, I'm very hesitant to commit to, to a, a pharmacy, but we've, we've had very preliminary discussions via AES on a, on a pharmacy. But it would be pure pharmacy, not, uh, like prescriptions-only kind of thing. And that's really intended to be in the, in the retail space of the senior housing building. So when you see in there that we have a small space that's going to pay ad valorem taxes, that's what we're talking about. And, and again, that would be more of a prescription pharmacy, not like your typical CVS or Walgreens, where you have, you know, greeting cards and candy and food and that stuff. This is really purely a place where people could pick up a prescription, kind of old-school pharmacy. And that's very preliminary conversation.
Yeah, we certainly don't have a commitment. We've had discussions and people interested in it. Likewise, a bank has, um, agreed to put a, an ATM that they would maintain in there once, you know, the building is up and functioning. And if that's successful, then they've talked about maybe in the future, putting a branch in there. But let's see what the ATM does first.
Will it just be a pharmacy? I, I know in the beginning, in earlier conversations, you were talking pharmacy and maybe something else to go in the phase one.
Yeah, so it, and we're talking, yeah, we're talking about the, not in the, not in the building that is currently Olson's, right? But in, in the, in this, in the senior housing building, there's.
That's phase two, correct?
One, two, three, yeah, that's fine. Yeah. I know there's confusion over that. So again, for the purposes of the discussion, let's call the, the current Olson's building one, the senior housing project, two, and the, the down-the-road replacing of the Family Dollar, three. In two, in the senior housing piece, is where we've been talking about the pharmacy. And that is, purely, it's very small, so it would really only be enough room for just a, a straight-up pharmacy.
But again, future.
You were talking.
Right. When we do, when we came through.
Happened something else.
Right. When we came through and were approved for our PUD, we showed that third building, um, which is, you know, as yet unplanned residential building with retail on the first floor. And that retail was larger, it could be up, you know, any number of.
Right, that was four thousand square feet.
Yes.
In phase.
Three. Correct, three. Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
So for the forty-five years, if you get the pilot, whatever, um, since I'll probably be around, um, will you, can you, do you have to own that? Or is it something you can sell? Or does it go to the government? Like, what happens if your business just closes down? The PK?
So those, that project will be owned, um, we'll be involved in it, uh, for, um, really a minimum of ten to fifteen years. Beyond that, um, we can sell that to another, um, another owner, if you will. They would be bound by all those same restrictions, including the affordability period and all that sort of thing. So they, they, the, you know, I don't know if I'll be here in forty-five years, I'm betting no. I may be living there, but who knows? But the, but the, the, the answer is that the, um, the housing will, it, it, it's written into the deal, the housing is.
Is this something, though, that you can make another profit on it? If the company were to sell in ten years?
After forty-five years, the answer to that question is that all the restrictions are off, including the taxes. Prior to that, um, you, you are in a spot where you're, where you're really, and I've actually never been involved with one that sold. Jacob can probably answer that. But if, they, they have, they do change hands sometimes from one, uh, low-income housing operator to another. But it's not something like you say, oh, you know, they sold it for twelve million dollars, even though the numbers were only, it was only worth two or something. It's because of those rent restrictions, you really don't make any money out of it.
Okay. So after ten years.
It's more, it's more of a kind of thing where we would say, oh, um, you know, PK and Third Coast, you know, the, all the Third Coast guys are, are old and want to retire, and the PK guys are, you know, moving on in their lives or something like that. And so we're going to dissolve the partnership that owns it. And so we find whoever the new PK Third Coast is to come in and, and buy that from us. And they would, they would say, well, you know, we're going to make this much on management, and there's a little bit of profit, and so we'll pay this amount. But it's, it's essentially typically enough to kind of get the mortgage paid off and, and you walk away. It's not, there's no big windfall. Now, in forty-five years, um, when it switches from, uh, when, well, it doesn't have to switch, it just has the opportunity to switch at that point.
Right.
Then, then, then there is a possibility for, for someone to say, oh, well, look at this, I've got a building that would cost me eight million to build, and, you know, I got all these tax credits out over this period of time. But, um, that's really, at that point, and the reason why the state goes to forty-five years, at that point, you're talking about buildings that may be obsolete, may require major renovation in order to bring up the code. What we've seen, and I have seen this, I haven't been involved in this, but I've seen this, uh, in, in my hometown, is that at that point, the building gets a complete gut rehab, and it may be market rate, um, but the cost to do that, I mean, the, the ones that I've seen in Grand Rapids, the, the owners came in and had to get all sorts of tax credits anyways, uh, different types of tax credits to make it even feasible for market rate.
But you're, the company itself, PK and Third Coast, it has to be invested for, for at least ten years, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so we're, we sign various guarantees when we enter any new projects, uh, one of which is a tax credit guarantee, um, and those, the tax credit compliance period is fifteen years. So we are, when we close the deal, we sign a guarantee saying, personal guarantee, not just corporate, saying that.
Day left.
Yeah. If, in those fifteen years, if those tax credits are endangered, our investor can come after us personally for, for those losses. And so after the fifteen years, you know, we, we could, you could technically sell it before the fifteen years, but you'd be signing, somebody else would have to step into your shoes as a guarantor. And so typically, you're not going to make any money on that, because somebody would have to be induced, they'd have to buy it really cheap in order for them to, to do that. So in terms of, can, can we make a lot of profit on this after fifteen years? Not really. I mean, we do have some properties that, that we developed back in the nineties, that we have resubmitted for tax credits and are re, um, we're renovating those. So we've done that over a dozen times in the last few years. So it, it is something that's fairly typical, and when you start over, the old partnership sells the property to a new partnership. So there's a sale, and there's a profit potential there. But I can say that, you know, in, in a market like this, you're not going to see the kind of growth, you know, when you have a restricted property, that, that, there's not going to be a whole lot of profit potential there. But there is. I mean, it, it's a piece of real estate, and that's what you're selling, so.
I just don't, I just want to make sure, like, like from six months from now, you can sell it and get rid of it. So there's just.
When we, when we sign all those guarantees, and we can't, I mean, to get out of them under those, we basically have to find somebody like us that would be willing to come in and sign the same guarantee and take over, you know, step into our position, and we'd have to give up any future profit potential.
Yeah, so, so both of our companies, PK and Third Coast, develop, uh, market rate and low income, and Third Coast does, uh, commercial a fair bit as well. There are all sorts of different types of developers and different business models for developers. When you're dealing with this type of tax credit, um, you, you're committed for the long term. Now, that's consistent with our business strategy anyways. We don't sell a lot of property. We think that the best thing to do is to build them and own them for the long term. But, but some don't have that, that type of business model. But in the low-income world, because of the guarantees, um, we're going to be in this town for a long time.
Same thing for us. We've, we've been in business for over thirty years. We've sold one property that, that we've had in thirty years.
Our previous pilot ordinance, I had a provision in it where the, the city, at the term of the pilot, could assume ownership for no additional cost. I asked what that meant, and it got some blank stares, but it was right there in the, in, in the ordinance. You know, I, I guess the easiest thing from the onset to do is just, is just say, you know, gee, this is wonderful, you know, it's such a benefit to the senior population,[1705.11] know, gee, this is wonderful, you know, it's such a benefit to the senior population, and, you know, being kind-hearted to people that, that weren't as fortunate financially as, as some others were. But you know what, on the other hand, I, I have to look at the city, and what we need for revenue to maintain the services that everybody appreciates and values here in the city, what makes the city such a valuable place to want to locate it? Takes money to run that, you know, I would, I would hate, two years from now, to be posing to the people a choice between keeping a police department or keeping a fire department, you know? But with the increased cost for healthcare and the increased cost for retirement, and just regular inflationary growth of, of things, and a lack of revenue growth to go along with it, those are very real possibilities in the future. I look at your spreadsheet here, I look at the plan, and I said, man, this is great. If, if you don't have any vacancy at all, are you going to pick a bon, a bonus of $14, $15,000 a year? That's not going to equate to anything for the city, that's going to go in the developer's pocket, or go into your contingency fund-
No, you-
Whatever, I mean, we're not going to get any more-
Sure.
Tax based on that.
You do.
The, the vat, what, 2%?
Right.
Okay, very minimal in, in game. I look at the experience that's been going on down in Grand Rapids and, and some neighboring states, and I look 12 years out in your spreadsheet where you're minus $2,000 cash flow, and, and I know there's a national trend, and, and there's some political action on the national and state level, because now we've got developers that are getting past their tax credit point, you know, of 10, 12, 15 years, and, and they're saying, gee, you know, we're in financial bind here, and, and going out and borrowing money, and then, and then doing a, a transfer of deed in lieu of foreclosure, and serving notice to MISTHA since they passed the tax credit, and by the way, we're not, we're not going to do low-income housing anymore, we're converting to market rate. And lo and behold, there's, there's a loophole there that, that may soon get changed, because I, I know at the state level, there are people that are interested in that, and the national level, people are interested in it too, and perhaps it's just one bad example, but it is, is an example of a company who has, has done it in the five-state area, and he says it's really not a business model per se that he's exploring, it's just the circumstances, you know, of, of these things, after they got all the tax credit, needed a cash infusion, and they were unable to sustain themselves, so, so they either foreclosed or did a transfer in lieu of, and, and turned them into market rate. So all these people are losing this low-income housing at the same time.
And, and I would tell you without hesitation that we don't agree with that, with that action, and we don't agree with what that developer's doing, and, you know, at, at the risk of getting myself in a lot of legal trouble, I would say, all, all I'll say is this, is that, is that, you know, there are, there are fraud investigations going on in that, and there's a lot of people looking into that.
But you know exactly what I'm talking about.
I know exactly what you're talking about, and, and I'll tell you, when I heard about it, I said, I, I think that's, if it's not illegal, it soon will be, and, and that, that hasn't played out, but, but that's not, again, you know, sure, could somebody try to do that here? Yeah, and, and somebody could try to pick my pocket, but that's, but that's not what, that, you know, I'd hate to, I'd hate to take this and say, well, that's what you guys do, that, that's, it's a very different thing than what, than what we're doing or what we're proposing. You know, PK Housing's been in business since the, you know, forever, yes, since 1986, they've never done that, that's never happened, they've had things that have, the term is, and, and Aaron, the, the term that we're talking about is, is resyndicating. So in 15 years, you go out and get some more tax credits, and you renovate the building, so when it goes negative on cash flow, what PK Housing's history is, we haven't been around that long. What their history is, is they just cut their management fees so that the cash flow stays positive. So they take it in, in the shorts when the, when the, you know, when, when the, when the things go negative, they just stop paying themselves until they have a chance to resyndicate the deal. The other thing you have to understand is that we're at risk, we're at risk every day, because as happens in this economy in Michigan, you know, most of us have been here for a long time, if not our whole lives, we know that incomes go up and incomes come down. We set a floor the day that we sign our deal, right? That's the income floor, that's the rent floor, whatever floor, whatever rent floor is in place. If rents go up, 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 and we get to go up, 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 up with the rents, and then they come back down, we don't get to cut our expenses, but we have to cut our rents back to that floor. So, so we're in a spot where, as, as you may point out, we could have windfalls, and the next year, if the economy, not if, because we know in 45 years in Michigan, it's not if, it's when, when the economy slows down and average incomes go down in this area for seniors, and those, those rent numbers come back down, guess what we have to do? We've got to cut the rents to go right back along with them. And so, so, so we, we have to float up and down, and so all we're doing right now is making a projection, but we know that the reality on the ground is different than that projection, and it, and at best, it could be a few thousand to the good on a given year, and at worst, it could be a few thousand to the bad, and part of our business is we take that risk. And, you know, some days, we make, we make money, and I, you know, we're both for-profit businesses. You know, we're not non-for-profits, although sometimes it seems to work out that way, but we're for-profit businesses, and, and, and we're taxpayers as well. And so, we know that in order for it to work, we have to create value, and sometimes, when in the process of doing that, you make some money, and sometimes in the process of doing that, you don't make some money. So, so it isn't without risk, and it isn't without long-term commitment that, that we come before you, I mean, we're, we're really here because we think that the community, it's a good thing for the community, it's certainly a good thing for us, and, and we think it works for, for everybody involved. Very often, and I'm sure you've heard this, because, you know, you're, you're all in public life, and if, if you, if you haven't heard it 1,000 times since you've all been elected, and I'm sure you've, you've probably heard it 2,000, but people will come to you and say, government needs to run like a business. So this is a business decision for you, if you agree with that statement, government needs to run like a business, this is a business decision. Anybody here tonight, or anybody who's going to watch this on TV, should think about, is this, is this a business decision you would make? Someone standing before you and saying, the thing you get 200 bucks a year for now, I'm prepared to give you somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 or 6,000, whatever that number works out to be, you have those calculations. 200 bucks today, 5,000 or 6,000 tomorrow, that's not going to pay for a police officer or a new fire engine, but it's certainly, on that little square of property, if everybody in town, their taxes went up 25% next year, that'd be a good, or 25 times, that would be a good thing for the city budget. But, but, so we're here saying, help us out, and it, and it actually has a benefit to the city, and I think we've already seen, and Ted, you, you may know this or not, but you've already done the calculations on whether or not the city ends up money ahead or money behind. So, so we're here asking you for help because we're trying to do something that's good for everybody, including us, not hiding that fact, but it also is helping the city end up money ahead, you know, on a percentage basis in a pretty significant way, and even on a small, forget the percentages, even on a, on a cost to serve, you know, we're, we're bringing in, you know, more tax money to the city than we're asking for net services that were going to be taken out.
Can I add just one quick thing? In terms of the foreclosure issue, MISTHA has actually already policed against that. One of the things that, when we apply to them, they look at, have you, it's called prior negative performance of either the owner or the management agent, and one of those black marks against you is if you give them, if you give the keys back to a lender. So MISTHA has already done that, and, and not only that, but for us to go and get a lender to give us a new loan, I mean, we'd have to check the box saying that we let a property go into foreclosure, I mean, we, we basically be out of the development business.
That, that guy's getting away with it because he's not a-
Because he's not a developer.
He's not a MISTHA developer, yeah. He's never developed properties, that was a complete thing.
I have a question about pilots and your experience. When you, when you look out 45 years, this is a long time, has there ever been pilots that go out that far where you, you take a period, say 15 years, and renegotiate that, that pilot, or does it have to be consistent throughout that whole 45 years?
The, the pilot can be written in any sort of term that the municipality chooses to have, there's no, to my knowledge, there's no restriction under the act in terms of how long it can go.
So you can start out at 2%, have it renegotiated in 10 years or so, and maybe even stay, still stay at 2%, but maybe future councils, economy changes, everything changes?
I mean, you, I, I think legally-
Or you have to have a 2% pilot for 45 years?
I mean, so, that's what we're asking for, and that's what we would very much like to have, because we are signing those guarantees, and we are taking on the risk, but, I mean, I don't know that there's-
Okay, so-
I'm not an attorney, I don't know if there's anything legally-
So, you know, reading body language, I'm doing social work for years, reading body language, what I just heard you say was, there, there's some negotiating road, is 2% the bottom line, or is 3% the bottom line?
No, no, you, I'm sorry, I thought you had asked, can you have it be a certain percentage for a certain period of time, and then it changes?
Yeah.
I, I am actually not sure on that, I'm not an attorney, but, to my knowledge, there's no reason you could not-
I'm not saying it changes, I'm saying it could be revisited, re-looked at a certain period of time, but is 2% your bottom line?
Yeah, for, and for, well, for the record, the, it's 2%, we were asking for a four-
Yeah.
This notion of municipal services agreement came up because it benefits the city.
Right.
So we're two and five, 2% and 5,000, which A, sustains a, sustains a, a baseline, and B, switches the financials so that the city, who's the most direct provider of services, ends up with more cash. So we're really somewhere over 4% with, with the proposal that we put in.
But we're half of what we got in the past. You know, I can look at numbers, and-
Right, and, and I can too, you're, you're getting twice per unit that you're getting at, at the public housing as well, that's another way to look at it, it's dollars per unit, not-
Well, I don't compare you to public housing, I compare you to the other pilot programs we have in the city.
Okay.
I guess my last, my next question would be on your, your profile, your portfolio overview of your hous, your housing, or the projects that you have, most of those are fa, this means nothing, except I'm curious, most of those are family projects, not senior? Is there a reason, your portfolio?
Is there a reason why?
That, that's just- Through the, through the natural course of business, I mean, like I said, we've been in business since the 80s, PK has bought, sold, developed different types of properties, some markets want family housing, some markets have a lot of folks moving in that, you know, workforce, workforce housing, or you have single, a lot of single moms, you know, we have, we have a lot of communities that are like that, it's all, it's all community-driven. So, you know, when we go into a community and, and we look at their needs, we do a market study, and, you know, it may be that they want a family housing development, they may want a senior housing development. Typically, family is more common, so I, I would say our portfolio is probably representative of the entire affordable housing stratum, I would say, it's probably about 2/3s family, 1/3 senior, so, and that's about what our portfolio reflects.
I have some comments. First of all, I just want to address the tax deferred exchange in your purchase agreement, which sounds obviously like a 1031 to me, because I'm in real estate, is there any possibility of that happening between the buyer and seller on this?
Let's back up, what?
I'm looking at your purchase agreement.
Purchase agreement with, with DJ Olson, with the, with Olson?
Yes.
Are they going to use a tax deferred exchange?
Right.
I, I don't know. I don't know if they're-
Don't they generally have to disclose that? Isn't there a time limit attached to those as well?
There are, yeah, but that has nothing to do with the buyer, that's something that, that we would probably find out at closing if that's what they're doing, if they're doing a 1031 exchange, and then they have responsibility to put the money in escrow and identify property within 60 days and purchase within six months, or close within six months, but that's, we don't have any, it means nothing to what we pay or what we do with the property.
I'm just curious if there was something like that happening?
Yeah, I, I, I'm unaware, it's certainly something I can find out for you.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments, basically, to inform council. I had asked at our last council meeting, when we had our assessor address us on property values, I'd asked her what the, how much Harbor Village was paying, for example, in property taxes, and I had guessed 25%, and she called me the day after, it's actually 23% of our total personal property taxes that we pay, but if you add in the other waterfront properties, such as the housing on Dunes Drive, the condos on the river, it's actually 35%. So oddly enough, maybe it's not odd, but the way it's working out is, we have a very affluent portion of District 2, and we have, we have public housing in, in District 2, and now we have this proposed development. I am, I talked to Molly, and, and, you know, she's, she's the one that brought this up, but it's something that I, I've known for, for many years, obviously, the fastest way to grow revenue is to either build additional housing units, or to have property become uncapped. So, to me, and I don't think it's something that you can measure, we don't know how many people in the city would be willing, not willing, but want to be in the, in the new housing development, that would be selling property that would become uncapped, probably, they're going to be coming from much more modest homes than, say, Harbor Villages. So the uptick, the uptick is probably not going to be as big as you might think, maybe it'd be a couple hundred dollars or 500 dollars a year, but it is still something to consider, it's, it's slow growth, and it's something that is a natural occurring process as people age and they downsize. So, I'm also, I'm sorry, I'm getting a cold. You had talked about phase three, and the possibility of doing condos, so I want to ask you now, if you don't mind, what has been your experience in doing condo developments?
Us personally, we have not done condo developments.
Not at all?
Yeah, we haven't done. Not that we wouldn't, the market hasn't really allowed for them, so Third Coast didn't do residential prior to 2008, and since 2008, condo developments really have been almost impossible to get financed for new builds, so we just haven't, we haven't even considered it, the, the rental market for the stuff that we've been doing has been much more interesting, but we're not, we, we wouldn't object to doing them, we have no problem with doing them, we just haven't done one yet, we haven't done senior housing yet either, they have, but we haven't.
Well, buried in my statistics I just shared with you about waterfront being valuable, and the fact you have the view of the river, which is nice, it's, it's probably something you should really-
My, my expectation, actually, and I, and I want to come back to the percentage of total tax issue too, but my, my expectation is that there's a very good chance that those would end up being, as we, as we look at the market today, and remember that it's several years out, but there's a very good chance that those would end up being condo development, because that's really the way to get the, to get the market rate that you need in order to make the development work. So I, I would not be surprised at all if those were not, if those were condos. Secondly, one of the things you, you pointed out is, so, so we did something else, we actually went and looked at the waiting list that was provided to us by the Council on Aging, and we took all of the addresses, and we actually went in and looked at the specific people on the waitlist, and, and you're absolutely right, that, I was smiling when you were talking about 25 and 35%, we anticipated that the increase in tax revenues to the city, if all of those people, and we don't know, right, but all the people who lived with, and we, and we excluded anybody who didn't live within the four walls of the city, and it was somewhere in the 9,000 to 15,000 a year range of, of added tax revenue by uncapping.
It's going to be modest, but, yeah, so-
Yeah, but it was still, that, that was just from the groups, from the people in the city who would be selling their homes to move in, that we, and again, some of those people may not qualify and may not be, but, but to your point, there, there is some second order effects of this, that, you know, we're not standing here trying to take credit for, but as soon as you brought it up, I had to smile.
Would you just throw that figure at me again about the, the grocery store part of it, what was that taxes going, we were going to get on that?
I believe it's about 23,000 a year.
Sorry, I didn't-
And again, that's Dave math, so.
I have a question for staff, because there was a comment made earlier about city services affecting maybe two years down the road, getting rid of the fire department or police, that, that was thrown out there already. What are the effects of city services with this project?
With this project, there shouldn't be any call for Department of Public Works, obviously, nothing for parks, or marine, or those others. Police, given the demographics that they're looking for, is probably going to be minimal. And fire, in terms of fire functions with a, with a brand-new building fully suppressed, certainly hope we don't have a fire there, the odds are against it. So then that leaves our ambulance service, which, again, given the demographic, is probably more likely to have calls there, and because we do have a transport service, if any person has to be transported, that's a new revenue stream for us. So I, I think the, the impact on, on services is going to be minimal, we talked about it in staff, and probably the biggest exposure for us is on, on our ambulance service.
And how about on water and sewer?
Well, in terms, it's going to generate some additional dollars on an annual basis, and see if I can come up with that real quick.
About $16,000 projected in local water.
It was more than that. And I'll defer to Jeff, do you have those numbers on top of your head?
Wasn't the developer going to pay an upfront sewer thing?
Right.
Your, your five, you're showing $20,000 for water, on the spreadsheet.
This is what our engineers estimated, that annually it'd be about $250 for fire suppression, $34,000 for consumption, and 1,500 for ready-to-serve, based on a two-inch meter, so that's roughly almost 36,000.
two-inch meter. So that's roughly almost 36,000 dollars a year in utility charges. Plus, there would be another fee, a system development.
Just 31,000 for the system development.
Yeah, that would be above and beyond those numbers. So it, it would be giving us an additional, roughly annually, about 36,000 dollars a year in the, in the utility funds.
Thank you. I think, you know, I, I think the comment that council member was talking about, I substantiate from what's written in the budget, is that we, we can't discount the real possibility of headcount reductions in the future because of a lack of revenue growth. Those statements are a concern to me. You know, it's a concern to me that last year, when we did the budget, Morton Salt was asking for a 90,000 dollar tax appeal. And, and the city's position to the number one employer that puts millions of dollars a year into the economy here was that we would vigorously defend that through the tribunal because we couldn't afford that tax loss. And we can't, can't afford the number one employer to have a tax break. But at, at the same length, I'm not saying that I'm not willing to make concessions and, and agreements going forward, but I'm certainly not going to roll over for it when we do need the revenue and, and we do need to grow some things within the city. I wouldn't fight our number one employer and, and then give a 2% pilot out without some real due diligence and, and conversation. Anything else for tonight? I want to thank Third Coast and the PK Development for coming in here. Bob, thank you again for coming in and answering questions. Thanks to all the people that came and spoke and showed an interest in this process. I want to thank my fellow council members for indulging, Councilman Zalinski and myself, because we wanted to have a meaningful discussion on this prior to coming up on an agenda and being voted on. Because often, we do not have an opportunity to share this much information and get these kind of questions answered. So my thanks to everybody. With that, most of the time.
Well, I got one question. This is for Thad. What other statements were made two weeks ago, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, about taxes around these, around the development? Housing and commercial taxes are different, correct?
Right, each-
And so-
Each property, our property class are looked at individually. So you don't value residential versus commercial versus industrial. Residential is all considered together. So there's really no, in terms of what your tax value is, it's my understanding that if it's a, if there's a brand new commercial development there, the adjacent residential properties, their tax values aren't going to go up just because of that.
Even if their values go up, they're taxable, the actual money that'd be in charge will only go up five, can only go up five, max 5%.
5% or foster living, whichever. Is it during now?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sure. Thank you all very much.